We're gonna open the October 17th meeting, the East Long Meadow Planning Board. Are we on, Don?
Yep.
Okay, so recorder running. Larry.
I would say probably not. Guess you better get it out of the case.
Turn it on.
Uh-oh.
Give it to me.
You have to push a button?
I know the button to push. Yeah. We just go.
And I needed first public announcement to read.
Um. Now, let's see. Okay. Here? What's in here? We're recording, so. That's good. I have to say, subject to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20. There you go. That we are recording this meeting on tape for the minutes. We are also taping it for LCAT. And I have to ask if anyone else is recording the meeting? Seeing none, we're in good shape. Can we move this chair so that... I'm not staring at a chair.
We can.
This one too. When you come up, take a chair and sit here.
Slide him back.
Okay, first order of business is a public hearing on a special permit for Elizabeth Carpels at 575 Prospect Street.
Hello.
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 The planning, uh, excuse me, you gotta read this into the record. Uh, the planning community development department will hold a public hearing on October 17th at 6 o'clock in the school committee conference room, high school 180 Maple Street, East Long Meadow, Mass, on application for special permit submitted by Elizabeth Carpels to operate a family home daycare and property located at 575 Prospect Street. Information regarding this application is on file with the planning board and available to the public.
So, tell us what you're planning on doing.
Well, I currently have a daycare in East Long Meadow, so I'm moving to a new location. Just got engaged, so.
Very good, congratulations.
Thank you. So I figured first things first, to change the business over there and...
So you're actually moving?
Mm-hmm.
Yourself as well?
Mm-hmm. Oh, yes.
Yeah, that's, that's all. That was one thing I wanted to make clear, because home daycare is home daycare.
Right. Exactly.
And this meets the criteria for home daycare.
Double A, absolutely.
Double A, it's a great lot. You've got woods behind you, so that you've only got neighbors on both sides and across the street. And Ty, did you wanna say something?
Um, just for the record, I live across the street from the location, but my, whatever decision I make would be unbiased.
Okay. Anyone have any questions about this one?
No, I don't. It's an allowed use, it's zoned properly, she meets the zoning criteria.
Is anyone from the, open up to the public, does anyone in the public wish to speak to this hearing?
How many children are gonna be there and the traffic issues? I live next door.
Oh, okay. Would you like to address that? How many children you gonna have?
Oh, me, I'm sorry. I'm licensed for 10, so it will be more than 10.
Will you use the backyard as well?
Yes, it will be the backyard only. It will just be the front yard for a drop-off. It has a circular driveway, so that will be drop-off. Parents will come in the front door, which is how it's run at my daycare now.
Right.
And the play space will be the backyard only.
So you'll have people coming there in the morning and then in the evening, and won't be a whole lot of traffic other than that?
No, no.
Leave a spot for my granddaughter.
Okay.
Or less car.
Any other comments from the, the public? Hearing none, I take it back to the board, are there any other questions?
Yeah, so do you have other help?
I do. I have two other assistants. And then I have a couple of substitutes, but I have two certified assistants that are registered with the state as well.
So how many vehicles will be there all day long?
Um, it depends on the day. Two out of the five days, I have three assistants, so three cars. And the other three days, I have just myself and my other assistant, because we don't have as many kids.
And what are the primary drop-off and pickup hours?
I am open from 7:30 to 5:00. So usually like 7:30 to 8:00 drop-off, and then 4:00 to 5:00. They come at different times.
And I don't know all the particulars of a daycare, but do you have delivery trucks dropping?
No.
Food or supplies?
I wish, but no.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. I'm very familiar with the processes. I have been using an East Long Meadow-based home daycare for the past 10 years, before and after school and the pickup and things of that nature. So much of it is state-regulated.
Mm-hmm, exactly.
Yes, yep.
Other questions on the board? Hearing none, do I have?
Yeah, it's two.
Yes.
Is the backyard fenced?
It is not.
It's not. And what about sign?
No.
A sign, no sign?
Daycare sign? Is that what you mean?
Yes.
No.
Perfect.
Okay. Other questions or comments? Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, do I have any, any further discussion about the application? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the special permit?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Who was that?
Me.
Lou, okay.
Me.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, you're good to go.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And maybe a few days before we get paperwork done, because we're shorthanded right now, but you will get it.
All right, thank you.
And you know, there's a 20-day appeal period on special permits.
Perfect, okay, thank you.
Good. Okay, we have, it's only 6:06. We have a couple of waivers to do. We have one for Greater Springfield Counseling. If you care to read that, should be on the back of your, right here. Well, this is a new thing, by the way, we're gonna get packets at all the meetings now with all the applications.
So we don't have to print them out?
So you have to print them out, although, you know, if you wanna look, wanna do any research on them, you can do that. But they will be here, so that...
So this one, we're done with?
Which one am I looking for?
You're looking for Benton Drive Greater Springfield Counseling.
It's a typed-in one from the computer, just like you'd like. No, I'm kidding. Joke.
It was supposed to be the one that was supposed to be typed in. I don't know whatever happened to that.
So before you, well, before you go with that?
Sure.
So, and I know, George, you've been kind of helping up in the office, so are these forms online, so that a petitioner could go online, type them in?
No.
Submit them?
So...
And I guess, question is, if not, why not?
They are available online, they can be downloaded and printed, but they're not set up for interactive yet.
Okay.
Okay? And Denise is well aware of that, and Marge is working on it, but they're not there yet. Okay? Just, just so people know, what normally happens is somebody walks into the town manager's office, or the clerk's office, and asks for a business, business certificate, because you need a business certificate to get a loan, okay? They are handed a package of three things, the business certificate application, the request for waiver, and a form for the assessors. To say that they have, they paid their property taxes, okay? At that point, they typically walk upstairs with the form they've just been handed, go to the window, and say, "How do I fill this out?" Okay, seriously, this is the way it works. People are not aware they need this until they get the form, usually. You know, if it's a small business, is what I'm talking about. If it's, we'll see one tonight later, Verizon, they know what they're doing.
Yep.
Okay, that's different. But here, it's normally like, "What do I gotta do? How do I get this permit? So, fill this out now." And they do, and they leave it there.
Yep, okay.
Okay? So it's, yeah, we need to educate people that, yes, it is available online, and you can download it and fill it out at your leisure at home, and eventually they'll be able to do it online, but we're just not there yet.
So we have been kind of making, since I've been on the board, we've been making some recommendations about how the office might change some of the policies and procedures. Are we keeping a running list of these? Or is it kept somewhere?
Denise is keeping, I don't know, she's got a written list, but she's got, she knows what we need to do. And I have had discussions with her, now that I've been in the office, doing some of the day-to-day stuff, some suggestions that will be implemented, and Larry, of course, is going to help out with that, okay? Things like logging in everything that it, that comes in, okay, which has not necessarily been done.
Well, I think taking the form, converting it to a PDF, and pushing a couple of buttons, you can convert it to where they can type it in online.
Right.
Then they can know how to do that. Print it up.
Yeah.
They won't be able to submit it electronically, but they can print it up, and you can have something that's electronic.
That's right, that's right.
That's not, you know...
See, the problem we're having is, obviously, from my standpoint, is that, clerk, I'm reading these things, and they're all handwritten.
I know.
You can't read the handwriting, and we've been talking about this for a very long time.
Well, they could be submitted electronically via scanned in and emailed, correct? Yes.
But you still need... Typically, you want an original signature.
You want an original signature.
Okay, yes. They're, yes.
Yeah, I mean, there are some communities that you can submit it digitally, and it's a software for that.
We're just not there yet, it's a work in progress.
Someday.
Yes.
I think getting them typed would be great.
Rather than later, believe me.
I agree.
Thank you. Okay, it, things are gonna change in the office, we're gonna, they're gonna change, okay? Okay, so shall I read this to the record?
Yeah, just do.
Um, waiver of site plan, property owner is Benton Drive Associates LLC. Owner's address is 270 Benton Drive, East Long Meadow, Mass. Phone numbers are listed here. Name of proposed business is Greater Springfield Counseling. Owner of business is Robert Harris, Paul Shore, Shalinsky, and Michael Ginsberg, Julia Recky, and Melissa Case, Cuss, Case?
Case.
Case. Uh, business owner address is 175 Dwight Road, Long Meadow, Mass. Property address is 270 Benton Drive, East Long Meadow, Mass. Property district is industrial, allowed use is yes. Proposed hours of operation are Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Number of employees, including the owner, is eight. Summary business is counseling. The application was signed and dated October 5th, 2017.
So this is an office building on Benton Drive, it's an allowed use in the industrial garden park. Any comments or questions? Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion. So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next one is the same building.
Uh, waiver of site plan review, property owner is Benton Drive Associates LLC. Owner's address is 270 Benton Drive, East Long Meadow, Mass. Phone numbers are listed here. Name of proposed business is K. Low LLC. Owner of business is David Thor. Business owner's address is 62 Woodley Road, Long Meadow, Mass. Property address is 270 Benton Drive. District, property district is industrial, it's allowed use. Proposed hours of operation are 8:30 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Number of employees are three. Summary of business operation is software design. The application was signed and dated October 5th, 2017.
So again, it's an allowed use in office building on Benton Drive.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We got two minutes for NG Advantage.
They don't seem to be...
Did we get... Anybody hear from NG Advantage? No.
So they didn't respond to our request that they notify us?
We sent them a letter.
I saw that.
They did not notify us or anything, so...
Thank you.
Due diligence done.
Yep. We have, Hampered Pets, we have a site plan, right?
Oh, one of these?
Yeah, the...
Which, which one on the agenda are you referring to?
It's not on the agenda, it was, it was added at the last minute.
Oh.
This is a site plan change for Hampered Pets.
There you go.
Thank you.
Is that the one on Baldwin? No, Hampered Pets is North Main.
North Main Street.
Over by Cofflin's? Oh, it's that one, that's right, oh my gosh.
Coming for that?
She's Louise, yeah, I'm sorry, I apologize.
Do you know that neighborhood at all?
Yeah. How are you?
Okay, good.
First of all, we apologize for taking so long on this.
No worries.
You know, basically, she's adding a fence in back, right? Is that it?
Well, I got approved with the special permit with a fence in the back, but I didn't know the whole thing had to be on it, and we had to make a couple changes for safety purposes for the dogs.
Okay.
So the part on the concrete and that little, this little skinny strip, I think, if I'm looking at the right spot, um, the Smith and Associates had redone the plan.
Okay.
And that's the updated version of it, so there's just a small part that was added on.
Okay, so they're just basically changing the configuration of the backyard?
Yeah.
But again, because it was a site plan, we have to have the, the accurate, so...
Reverend.
Yeah, the back part, the, you know, original part that you guys looked at the first time.
The proposed fence, 82917.
Yeah, that part's staying the same, it's just a small part in the back.
Are you making it bigger or smaller?
No, it's just, I didn't put on the plan for the dogs getting from the back, or the back, you know, the back door to the fenced-in area, so there's just a little way for them to get there, and then there's like a concrete slab right off the back of the building, it's like eight panels, not a lot. And then just a little runway, and a lot of call it runway, but it's a walkway.
Do I have a motion to approve this?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much.
The paving sidewalk would feel very nice.
Thank you.
Does it look much improved, huh?
I keep driving by waiting for you to open.
Oh, believe me, I'm telling you, I'm like, okay.
You must be pulling her hair out.
I just need to get my permit, that's all. We're good, so... So can I take this and go get the permit, or my fence guy, could he go tomorrow to get it, or is that too soon?
You can do that, what's this, this is the 17th?
17th.
Okay. What's the address?
576 North Main, and thank you for your help with everything, appreciate it. So you guys will hold on to that one?
Yeah.
If I have an extra one.
Yep.
Good to go. Thank you.
You're good.
You'll see me soon.
Oh, yeah. Okay, um, we have a continuation of a public hearing on site plan review for NG Advantage at Deer Park Drive, and at our last meeting, we voted that the proposed juice was prohibited, because it was unduly hazardous. And we have, we notified the applicant by mail, the applicant has not gotten back to us in any way, so I'm gonna suggest that we close the public hearing at this point? Do I have a motion to do that?
I will make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second now.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And in this case, because it's a case of a prohibited use, I'm gonna change procedure and ask for a motion to deny the site plan, so it's very clear.
I would make a motion to deny the site plan based on it is prohibited hazardous use.
So, I'm gonna ask a procedural question. So, um, so we're gonna deny it, and so would David, they would be able to come back within two years?
Yeah.
Okay.
They could.
Okay.
And they can also appeal the denial.
Right, yeah.
If so choose.
Okay, all right.
But I wanna make it explicitly clear that we're denying it.
Okay.
Do we get a second on that?
I did.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Good, they're done. And I don't know if Verizon is coming in or not. We do have a, this, this is, this is a request, we don't have to do it at a specific time, but we can give them time to show up. What this is, they wanna put a, put wireless antenna on top of the utility pole, okay? And our bylaw says that if you put a wireless antenna on top of anything, and it increases the height, they have to come in for a site plan or a waiver of site plan. What I had suggested to them through Denise was that they apply for a blanket waiver to put these things on top of utility poles, so they don't have to come in for every time they want to do this. These are little repeaters, about four feet tall, and basically what they do is they clear up the dead spots, okay? So it's not like a huge cell tower or something like that. And I, I talked to Marilyn Richards and asked her why they put that provision in the bylaw when they wrote it, 'cause I wasn't here then. And she said it was to keep the nature of the town, so that we didn't have tall structures going up everywhere for cell towers. So if they put them, for instance, on the, as they did, did on, on the water towers, okay, they'd just be on the water tower, they wouldn't be sticking up above it, okay? So you wouldn't see them really. But this is new technology, these are much smaller antennas, much less conspicuous. So I had suggested they do a blanket request, they did not do that, they did a specific request. So I think we can deal with that, whether or not they're here.
So, do, if, I'm sorry. If they were to do a blanket request, is, is that then rewritten into anywhere, or is there a time restraint on that, or is there years, or we would determine what we would have put on that?
We could determine what we would have put on there.
Okay.
Okay? We could waive it for a period of time, we could waive it for a certain number of installations.
Or if technology were to change and be erected in a taller fashion?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and we, we would, I had asked that there be a limit of not more than five feet on the utility pole, higher on the utility pole.
So they're gonna, so this is the utility pole, they're gonna attach it, and it, and it's gonna be five feet taller than the existing?
Four, actually, four feet.
Taller than the existing?
Right, yeah. Right. But I suggested we, we grant them five, so that if it's four feet, one inch, you know, they're not out of compliance, sort of thing. It, they're very small, very inconspicuous.
Yes, I have seen them, yeah.
Yeah. And to make them come in every time they wanna do one of those, 'cause they're doing more and more of them, just seemed kind of ridiculous.
Which, it is a benefit to the community as well.
Yeah, oh yeah, it is.
Does, did he provide pictures?
Yeah, we have, we had a photograph.
Yeah.
It came in unfortunately after the package was put together, but it shouldn't be in there somewhere. She had an interest.
Donna did email us all those.
She did not email you this one, because this one came in when she was walking out the door on vacation.
So she didn't go back inside and re-mail it?
No.
Oh, the nerve, the nerve.
It's specifically just for telephone poles, though.
Right, for utility poles.
Utility poles.
I mean, it's... Different poles are owned by different utilities. Sometimes it's the electric company, sometimes it's the phone company. It's hard to keep track. There are two sets.
Once they're up, from what I've seen, you don't even know they're there.
Yeah, 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 I've seen the picture.
Yeah.
If you're looking for it, you can see it.
Correct.
But if you're just driving down the street, you won't really, you won't notice it.
It's better than the highway ones that they obscure by the bald foliage.
Oh, the fake trees? It's amazing how that is always the best-looking tree in the neighborhood.
Yeah, it is. It's green all year long.
It's almost like we should put one of those in my backyard.
So do you wanna read the, the request? It should be there.
Well, let's see, it's like a series of emails.
There was, there was an actual typed request in there somewhere.
Donna?
Do you have the type request in there? Just look up right there.
I think these are all email transmissions. They're not, they're typed.
Okay, I know I saw it.
I jumped off that. It'd be in here.
Yeah.
That seems to be the email thread.
That's the email thread, but there's no, they had a, I know there was a photograph of Verizon, and it was a actual, they may not have made it into the bag.
Okay, well, maybe it's in that, it's one of those four sheets in there?
No, it's not.
Okay.
It's not. Okay, well, if we don't have it, we can't act on it, we'll have to wait until next time. Because I don't see it. It's just, I'm not just not getting it. Not easy either. Okay, well, we should have to do it next time. All I can say. Okay.
Do we know if they're coming?
I don't, they don't know whether they are or not, they have not communicated.
Seems like they would be here by now.
I would think so. Well, we give them another five minutes, and then we will... Is there any other business or anything?
We could review the minutes.
What?
We could review the minutes.
Okay, we have the minutes of July 18th. Has anybody read them and commented on them? It should be in the minutes. Let me see this one, see whether I have my corrections in here. I have not reviewed these. I have not reviewed this, anyone else?
No, they don't look familiar to me.
No.
We're, we're working on minutes, it's another thing we're working on, is trying to convince them and get them done right, and that has been, I know there have been a number of discussions between Denise and our assistant about the quality of the minutes we're acting with.
So how are they done? Does she listen to the tapes?
She listens to the tapes.
Transcribes them?
Transcribes, okay, and part of the problem is that transcribing what's spoken verbally does not always turn out to be something that makes sense when you look at it in paper.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah, that's, that's very true.
Especially if, if you don't fully understand what's being said, and you don't know what words to put in there.
And punctuation can play a large role in swaying what you, what one said to appearing to sound something different.
To me, like an explanation point as opposed to a question mark? You mean like an explanation point as opposed to a question mark?
That would be very true there, Todd, yes.
That would be very true, yes.
That's happened.
Yes. So it's, again, it's work in progress. We know we need to catch up on the minutes. I've been working with Donna a little bit myself, trying to teach her how to, how to summarize, do summary minutes rather than every word that's said.
Because we have LCAT.
It takes twice as long, type of minutes like that, than does the meeting take.
Well, it takes us twice as long to read through them.
And you don't, you know, minutes don't have to be a transcript.
Yeah.
They have to be more than just the vote.
Yeah.
But they don't have to be voluminous.
You have to include all the pertinent testimony.
Yeah.
Because that's the first thing the judge looks at when you get an appeal. Okay? But other than that, the asides, the redundant comments, you don't have to have all that in.
Right. Do we have a status report on the Pride suit?
No, we don't. I know that Jim is working on it and in part because of our lack of staff, he hasn't been getting everything he needs. So I'm hoping that will change shortly, because I'm really not in a position to go in the office and start pulling files and copying things. So hopefully that will get resolved before long.
So I think, actually, go ahead. I'm sorry, go ahead. I was gonna bring it up, the next lawsuit.
Okay. Well, I gotta, I'm gonna suggest that since we've done our business, that we adjourn.
I would, I would.
Well, you'll wait till 6:30?
Uh, okay, we can wait two more minutes. Yeah, which lawsuit are you gonna bring up?
I was asked today, do we have a, an appearance at the end of the month for the other one regarding the, oh, the medals regarding the appeal we got on that? Do we have an appearance coming up?
We don't have to appear for any of these.
We don't?
No.
Okay. I gotta go back and go and read my paper again that I was served.
It does appear that you need to appear.
That's right, that's a question.
You will all get them.
Yes.
Typically, you turn them over to your town council and they take care of it and they will notify you if they want you to do it.
This is the town suing the town.
This is the town, it's a little different.
The town suing the town. The Board of Selectmen, the Board of, sorry, the Town Council.
Happens all the time.
Town Council is appealing a decision to the planning board. So.
Oh, wow.
Town Council, so.
So who's defending the planning board?
Nobody.
That's where we're.
Well, you know, you may want to show up.
Well, that's where I'm headed.
You are?
Russ, you're probably the best called my.
If you're being sued, I'd show up.
No, you should really, I mean, there should be a request for the town manager to fund.
Well, the town is responsible for finding its township.
Representation, yeah.
Correct.
This is, I mean, this is an appeal. This is basically, they're appealing a decision to us. And it was, I don't want to get into it. It's just one of those things that shouldn't have happened, but for a lot of reasons it happened.
George, Verizon's here.
Oh, they are?
Yeah.
Verizon? Come on up, come on up.
Hey, I got on Pat.
Right on, right on time. No, I don't. Do you have a copy of what you submitted, the waiver?
I do, I do.
It did not make our bag, unfortunately, but if you have one, we can act on it.
Sure.
So, good evening, everyone.
Good evening. Thank you for showing up.
Thank you for seeing us. My name is attorney Mike Fenton with Shat Schwartz and Fenton in Springfield. I'm here representing Selco Partnership, doing business as Verizon Wireless. I'm joined by my colleague Elizabeth Jamison, who's the zoning coordinator for Verizon Wireless in this geographic area. And do you have a copy of what we submitted, which is right here?
Okay. Now, do you want to read this into the record?
Is Gary Fenton your father?
He's not, no. It's a different spelling. I'm F E N T Owen. He's F E N T I M.
Waiver of site plan review. Property owner is 182 North Main Street LLC. Owner's address is 182 North Main Street, East Long Meadow, Mass. Phone numbers are listed here. Name proposed, oh, it looks like it's crossed out, but apparently it's typed through the line. Selco?
Selco Partnership.
Okay, Selco Partnership, DBA Verizon Wireless. Business owner's address is 99 East River Drive, East Hartford, Connecticut. Property district is business, allowed use is yes. Proposed hours of operation are not applicable. Number of employees are not applicable. Date of last parking plan is not applicable. Certified updated plan required. Okay, excuse me. Summary of business operation is antenna installation on existing utility pole at 182 North Main Street and future utility poles across the town of East Long Meadow.
Okay, that's in there, okay, good. That is in there, good.
We were talking about that before you got here.
Yeah, we did put that in there.
Okay.
The application had been signed and dated October 13th, 2017. Sorry about that.
So, again, thank you for hearing us this evening. The application is to waive site plan review for all utility pole installation across the town with respect to wireless telecommunications antennas. I understand based on a conversation with the building inspector, building commissioner, I should say, that that request is, he advises that it be limited to a five-foot increase in the height of utility pole, which we would be happy to comply with. Virtually all of our installations to date have complied with that restriction and if there's a need to go beyond it, we can always go through the site plan approval process. The impetus for this request is we have one pole that's in question at this time. It's located, excuse me, at 182 North Main Street, the site of Coughlin's Breakfast Place. We have a replacement pole that will be at a height of 34 feet and with the antenna, it's a four-foot, one-inch antenna, including the mount, that'll increase the height of the pole to just over 38 feet, 38 feet and one inch. The purpose of these installations is to offload coverage and data needs of Verizon Wireless as people are relying more and more on their cell phones to be able to improve coverage in the town of East Long Meadow. We're not a stranger to the town. We recently received approval to install a rooftop installation via special permit at the Plaza on North Main Street with the Rockies. So included in the packet is a structural report, each of our installations on utility poles. We do have a consultant go out and make sure that the pole is structurally sound in order to be able to accommodate our antennas. If it is not, as is the case with this 182 North Main Street, we will replace the pole with a like-kind pole and install our antennas thereafter. It's worth, I'd like to point out to the board that we do have one of these installations already in the town, under the jurisdiction of the prior building commissioner. He allowed that installation to go through as a notice-only site. We've deployed this technology in virtually every community across western Massachusetts and if you haven't noticed the installation, that's a good thing. It's on North Main Street. It's on the top of the pole, right between the Stop &amp; Shop Plaza and Heritage Park. And so I have a Google image of the pole installation for you. You can see right up here is the antenna and this is our ancillary equipment. There's no ground disturbance. That's the pole on North Main Street as it currently exists. And if you'd like to see some samples of other installations, that's the only one we have in East Long Meadow currently. If you'd like to see some examples of other installations, I brought those here. These two are in West Springfield and the last one, which is a lower resolution image, is in Pittsfield.
So, I had suggested that we do this as a blanket permit and I suggested the five-foot because, like you say, four-foot, one-inch, you don't want to be one-inch over. But it makes sense to me, it's new technology, it's a lot less obtrusive than the big cell tower. My other suggestion was that we limit it to one antenna per pole under the blanket, because that looks like what you're gonna be doing.
That's, we would be fine with that condition.
Okay. And other than that, it seems silly to come back every time you need to put another one in, so.
I agree with George. I think it's a step in the right direction for the town. It will improve everybody's cellphone usage, computer usage, internet, data usage in the town. One question, these tubular-looking poles, what is the height of those?
That pole is in West Springfield. I don't have the construction drawings for it.
Would these fit within the realm of the five feet?
I can't, yeah, most likely, based on the plans that I've seen so far, our antennas will never reach that size in terms of five feet on top of a utility pole.
Okay, alright.
But with the mount, to your point, with the mount, it's possible that we could get close to that limit.
Okay.
With the Coughlin site, we are at four feet and one inch, so it doesn't, doesn't give us a lot of room to negotiate. We'd appreciate maybe a little bit of an increase from that five feet, but if the board's decision is five feet, we will do our best to live within it.
And I think we'd like to go, I personally would like to go with five feet and if that proves to be a problem, we can come back and we can talk about it. Does that make sense?
I would agree with that, yeah.
No higher than five feet?
And that's, sorry, pole and antenna, total, total height?
The five feet is, is the increase in the height of the pole?
Top of the pole, plus bracket, to the top of whatever receiver.
The bylaw was written, I went back and did some research, the bylaw was written so that we wouldn't have tall structures on top of other tall structures. So that, for instance, the water towers, which have antennas on them, I don't know if they're yours, but they have antennas on them.
They do have antennas on the water tower.
That you wouldn't have antennas sticking up high above the water towers so that it would look weird. You know, and same thing with the big cell tower that we have, that you wouldn't increase the height of that, that's under special permit anyway, but, you know.
So five foot is sort of that magic number that you experience with the height?
Yeah, but that, again, that was written 10, 15 years ago, when the technology was different and the antennas were bigger, you know, everything was different. These things are very unobtrusive and therefore they meet the, what I would call the intent of the bylaw, which was not to, not to change the way the town looked.
So, before you got here, we were trying to figure out what they looked like and one person mentioned they look like a guillotine, or, no, a bayonet. These are far from looking like a bayonet.
Yeah, these are more like a.
The diameter.
These are more like a security camera.
Yeah, what's the diameter?
A tin can.
Because the diam, because that is not visually attractive as compared to a bayonet.
Yeah, and the ones that I've seen, the old ones, where they were just like a single.
Your eyesight is here.
Well, my other question is, so.
Have you ever noticed that one, though?
You primarily have one, like you said.
The diameter is 12 inches.
You have one at Rockies. You're gonna put one up at Coughlin's. So is the intent to essentially put these additions on retail areas, industrial areas, rather than residential areas?
It will be both. We have deployed, most recently, we have deployed the technology in West Springfield in some resident, very residential areas.
So they're not gonna obviously have to go on every pole?
No, certainly not.
But how many poles do you ballpark, we will need them? How many dead spots are there?
Hard ground, quarter.
Well, I can't, I can't, I can't give you, I can't give you an exact answer on that.
Well, I asked for ballpark.
Yeah, our radio frequency engineers would be the ones that'd be most capable of doing that. What I can tell you is, in the long range, it's gonna be more than a half of a dozen. How much more than six installations we have across the city, I think is gonna be a reflection of demand. It's not gonna be, it's not gonna be hundreds. So I can't, without having the information in front of me, just, you know, as an attorney representing the client, I can't, I can't speak for them in terms of what their future coverage needs will be and what the future of the technology will dictate.
Right.
But we do expect it to be, to be more than the presentations that we've made to you today with those two installations we have. We do have plans for future installations and.
But a blanket permit is unlimited.
I'm sure there's an exorbitant cost to this, so you're not looking to put it on every pole.
The average output, based on prior testimony of radio frequency engineers, the average output for these can be in extreme cases, like up to 500 feet, in more saturated cases, closer to 100 feet. So you're not gonna see us going on every pole, but there are occasions where we go on poles that are near each other. This pole that is in West Springfield with the Biggie and Riverdale, Riverdale, excuse me, Memorial Drive right there, we do have another installation that's about a block and a half over.
Where the demand is higher.
Where the demand is extremely high.
Yeah.
You know, if you look at our West Springfield separation of poles, it's really geographically, there's a lot more separation than those two installations in that really high-traffic area.
Well, I mean, Coughlin's is only a few hundred yards up from Heritage Park.
From Stop &amp; Shop, yeah.
But.
And a few hundred yards from the Rockies, right?
So let me make a suggestion here, that we do it as a blanket permit, five feet, and, but for a period of, what, two years, let's say?
I was just thinking the same thing, two years.
And then we can revisit it. And if we like what's going on.
Should we put a limit on the number?
Yeah, I was thinking of that way. I was thinking of, let's say we were unlimited up to 20 or 10 or whatever number we think is a good number, just so we can see how this is working out. And if it's working out fine, then maybe we can make it unlimited, but I feel, it's not the end of the world, but I hate to make things unlimited as well.
Yeah, okay.
What, two years?
I mean, I don't want you coming back every single meeting.
You said more than a half dozen.
That'd be crazy.
But does that mean less than a dozen? Obviously, yes, it does. Yes, I just answered my question. But does that mean you're encroaching, you know, the, you know, the.
If we were limited to, if we were limited to 12, I think that that could prove to be a burden to us in the long run.
Okay.
Why don't we say up to 20 for a period of two years? And at the end of two years, we'll review it and see if we want to extend it.
See if we've had any complaints or if people are wonderful?
No. No?
No.
No? What's your suggestion?
So, people move to, I, as you know, I'm big on the character of the town and retaining the character of the town. So that's why I asked the question about commercial areas and industrial areas. So I'd be okay authorizing, you know, your two years and up to 20 if they were in commercial and industrial areas. And anything that involving a residential neighborhood, they come back so we can take a look at it. That's my thought.
So let's say then what you're saying, Russ, is anything that's within a commercial, anything that's not within, anything that's not in a residential zone would be.
Means business-owned as well.
Yeah. Yeah, but what I'm saying is, anything that's residential, no.
Without a special.
Without a special permit.
Not a special permit.
Or a site plan.
Yeah.
Is that the only zone you would like to restrict at this time or are you thinking there are any other zones? Okay. So a commercial, industrial, all that's fine, but when, soon as we start crossing the line into residential, they come back?
I disagree with that, because I think that, I know, because people have voiced out, that a lot of the problems we have with cellphone service, I thankfully don't live in one, are in residential areas.
Sure.
So I would disagree with that, that statement, only because a lot of the people suffering and not getting the service are in residential. And we do have a lot of home offices, especially in these, you know, Zone A areas, which, this, they need this, they require this to, for a living. So I would disagree with limiting it to only business and industrial.
But nothing is limiting those people to get it after a site plan review.
Right.
I just don't see them having to come back every time.
Yeah, Verizon's.
Maybe they could do some planning and come back with a number at one time, like four or five. I mean, they have full-time engineers to do all this and, I mean, they could actually lay out a plan and come in with a request for 10 or 12 at a time, rather than doing it piecemeal. And they could actually map out the town to see where the dead spots are and just take care of it all at one time. Instead of just doing a blanket, go ahead and have at it, I'm sure they would do it respectfully, you know, and I have no doubt that with attorney Fenton representing them, they'll do a, you know, wonderful job laying it all out. But I'd just like to have a little more thought into it. That's my opinion, so.
Who? Haven't heard from you much.
You want to point in front of his house?
I was going the other way. I was saying that they give them a permit for 30, 30 years. And now I believe, now I listen to Russ and he just changed my mind, like, you know. So I'm, I'm like, oh God.
Well, if I, if I may, a part of Verizon's intent in deploying this technology is to reduce the need for larger-scale facilities, what we call small cell or macro cells, which are towers or rooftop installations. And those, in almost all contexts, trigger special permit review and sometimes variance review and the telecommunications act can come into play. These installations are much smaller in nature. It's our opinion that it's a very discreet installation. For all of the ones that we've done, all across western Massachusetts, everywhere from Pittsfield to Long Meadow to Springfield to, and everywhere in between, South Hadley, we have not received complaints from neighbors about the visibility of the installations. And I will tell you candidly that it is sometimes the densely populated residential areas of a town that are difficult to reach with coverage and with large-scale spraying installations. If permitting is difficult or not as streamlined in the town of East Long Meadow as it is with other places that we have this technology, we may find that, you know, the radio frequency engineers, if we have to go through the same type of public hearing process for an application process for an antenna on a utility pole that we would for an installation on a rooftop or a tower installation, Verizon may make the business decision to move forward with that larger installation, which does not benefit the town. So I would just want you to have the benefit of knowing that before deciding.
Thinking back on that, would you say the density of these was probably more in those commercial business areas, whereas the, you know, residential, you're not gonna have every other pole?
That's right.
That's the, I would keep.
I mean, personally, I find this less obtrusive than the gray boxes that are low down on the poles with the, the green lights on it.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, which are now all over town.
Yeah.
Our installations are smaller than the transformers that can go up as of right.
Back, you have a bit, you said if the integrity of the pole is not sufficient enough to withstand your antenna, you will replace the pole?
Yes.
Meaning Verizon will replace the pole?
In conjunction with whoever co-owns it.
Correct, okay. Yep, correct. So that in itself, I see as a good thing as well, because if the integrity of the pole cannot take that weight, it's obviously already been injured, if you will.
So I don't take kindly to veil threats, especially from a utility. So I thought that we gave you an option that I gave on the table. Map to town, tell us where the blank areas are, come in all at once for your residential and we could take care of it all at once, instead of doing it piecemeal. So that would help Verizon not worry about their permitting process. They can do it efficiently all at once, but at least we get an opportunity to take a look at it.
I don't, I don't know from a business standpoint that we can do that. We have not in any other town deployed that type of, that type of plan. And I think the reason for it is that the network is changing. So, you know, our needs today may not be the needs a year from now and this technology didn't exist two years ago. So, you know, the future of the wireless industry is subject to how people are using their phones and what they're using them for. And what we use them for today is very different than what we use them for five years ago and 10 years ago. So.
But I thought when I asked you ballpark, how many were you talking about? You said you couldn't answer that, but somebody could. You had a technician or somebody that Verizon has that would know that answer.
If it was important to the board to get an answer to that question, we would have to confer with our radio frequency engineer and other consultants to be able to get a, a specific, a specific ratio of what, what the town could expect for installations. Is that fair to say, Elizabeth? I, I'm not in a position to say.
Maybe we could see an aerial photo of one of these in a residential area.
I don't know that you see them, the tree lines and things of that nature.
So you get a, so you get a context.
He's correct. That's a residential neighborhood. I, I just wanna go on record saying that I think it's beneficial. I think that there's a need. I think there's a want, which are two very different things. And I think both of them are highly elevated right now. I have never personally done a blanket waiver of site plan. This would be the first for me. I would be very comfortable limiting it to five feet. Maximum of 20 to be revisited in two years if the need increases.
Can I take that as a motion?
I would make a motion to approve.
Like you said.
Previous.
Yeah.
Statement.
Do I, do I have a second on that? Anybody? No. Do I have a different motion then?
Yeah, I would do one. I'll throw one out there. So I'm fine with two years, cut it to 10, and non-residential areas. So you can go do 10, fine. But the minute you hit a residential area, come back in and look at the site. Just so that we have an opportunity to see what it's gonna look like.
Are you saying non-residential zoning districts?
Yeah.
As opposed to areas?
Districts, not, non-residential.
Those are two different things and one is easy to, one has a line around it and one.
You know, Russ, I'm, I'm close to where you are, you're at, but I would feel, I would feel, I'm, I'm more inclined to increase the 10 to 20, but still keep it within the non-residential zones.
That's fine.
So is that, take that as a motion?
That's fine.
To approve a waiver of site plan for up to 20 utility pole-mounted antennas in any zone that is not residential.
For how many years?
For up to two years, for two years. At which point we can revisit it and see whether we wanna extend it or expand the, the area. And if you wanna do a, so that, that's a motion. Do I have a second for that?
Well, you made it. I'll second it.
I didn't make it.
No.
I made it, you'll second it. Okay, further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Aye.
One? Okay. So it's four, four to one. So that passes. And if you wanna put one in a residential area, apply for a specific waiver of site plan. Okay?
But we, but we would urge you to try to do more than one at a time, if you possibly can.
Yeah.
We try to do that. I mean, it's in our interest from a business standpoint to do that.
So for example, the, the, the town map you're referring to, Russ, it probably, if you came in with that and saying, hey, here's a town map, here's all the residential areas, here's where we think, you probably would have a much greater success rate.
Right, yeah.
Whereas right now, we're kind of stabbing in the dark on, gee, we, we're not sure how many there's gonna be. We're not sure where they're gonna be. And we're just throwing caution to the wind. It may be perfectly fine, I'm not criticizing anything you're doing, but I just think a better plan would make it easier for us to approve it. Carpe laude.
The only question that I would ask of the board is for some clarity regarding the zoning district issue. So a lot of our installations are in the right-of-way. And if we're in the right-of-way and we're between two zones, how would you have us determine that?
That would be for the link commissioner to determine.
Okay. All right.
Well, that's also a good point because you're.
This installation is in the business district.
Don't go the right-of-way. You're zoning the properties outside the right-of-way. The right-of-way typically, not as in a zone.
They're not, and, ordinarily.
Probably you're talking about abutting the zone, within the right-of-way of abutting the zone. And that way you'd have whichever side of the street it's on.
Some will be very hot and dry.
That's what I'm asking.
The zone's actually doing it the right-of-way. It's only we have, we have, the, the right-of-way going between two zones that we have an issue.
And it would only be an issue right now if they're business-abutting residential.
Yeah.
Because majority of the time it's gonna be business, business, business-industrial, garden, park, industrial.
That's, we have a, that's a different.
It may not become an issue.
It may not.
But I just wanted to point that out that we are most of the time in the right-of-way. This time we're on a private property, but generally it's the right-of-way.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I can't tell you when the decision is gonna be done because we're a little shorthanded right now.
Keep those in mind.
Happen now?
Yep. If you know where the business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconded by Russ. All those in favor?
Aye.
Good.